I'd like to welcome everybody. This is our regularly scheduled city council meeting for Tuesday, November 1st, 2022. Call a meeting to order. If you would, please rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll have a roll call by city clerk.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Ed Yulaberry.
Present.
All city councilors are present.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, which I'm aware of.
Thank you. Now is our call for public comment agenda item. Call for public comment is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on matters raised during this time. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the council? And seeing none, thank you. We will move on to item number six. Approval of minutes. City council consideration of the minutes of the October 17, 2022 special city council meeting and the October 18, 2022 regular city council meeting. And I would entertain a motion to approve minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve as read.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item number seven. New brew pub liquor license application. City council consideration for an application for a new brew pub liquor license at 830 North Townsend Avenue for Pomona Brewing Company Incorporated, doing business as Pomona Brewing Company, for consumption on the licensed premise and to sell malt liquor beverages manufactured on the licensed premise and packaged in sealed containers for consumption off of the licensed premise. This is city attorney Ben Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is an application for a brew pub license. File is in order and fees have been paid. The city clerk prepared written findings, which are in the city's official file, and I would encourage you to review those as we go through this. Petitions concerning the desires of the neighborhood were circulated, and originals are also in the official file. I'll briefly summarize those. There were 70 signatures submitted. Eight of those signatures were determined to be insufficient because seven were outside of the city limits and one had failed to indicate whether they supported or opposed the license. That leaves us with 62 signatures that were valid and in support of the license. There were a number of comments made in support as well. I won't read them all, but they were all quite positive. And with that, I would submit the city's official file into the record for the hearing. I'll also offer you my opinion that the petitions adequately reflect the desires of the neighborhood. Mr. Mayor, with your permission, may I call the applicant forward and ask a few questions?
Yes, please.
If the applicant is present, please come up to the microphone there in the middle of the big oval table.
If you would please state your name and address for the record.
Home address?
Yes.
Okay. Kevin and Chelsea McHugh. We are at 318 Pineview Drive here in town.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can you tell the council about your proposed business plan?
Sure. Do you want to? So we are looking to become Montrose's next brew pub. So we would be brewing our own beer on site as well, a small kitchen to provide pub fare, I guess is probably the best way to describe that. So, yeah.
Also, I'd like to add to that. You know, it's been kind of a lifelong dream for us for the last, I shouldn't say lifelong, but last 10, 15 years. A big thing that's really important to us is, is community. And as in our previous business that we were owners of, that was really important to us then, and I think we showed that, and we would like to continue that. You know, we have kids that are being, you know, raised in this town and in sports and whatnot. And so that's really important for us to kind of give back to that and just provide a space where really our community members can come together, whether it's just for an evening out or it's a family that wants to come in and get lunch one day. That's really kind of our, you know, our, our goal is just to kind of keep creating that sense of community.
I'm going to change the topic a little here, and I'll just review with you that the Colorado liquor code requires that the needs and desires of the neighborhood be considered when determining whether a new liquor license should be issued. For our purposes, I recommend that preliminary designation of the neighborhood be the area encompassed by the city limits. Do you understand this determination of the neighborhood?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have any objections to that?
No.
So with that neighborhood in mind, being the city, do you believe that the needs of the neighborhood are being met by current liquor licensed establishments?
No.
Okay. Can you explain why?
Oh, I have some notes on that. In regards to that, that area is an underserved area as far as any real like restaurants, brew pubs, kind of what we're, we're looking to kind of create. So the kind of the neighborhood and that surrounding area, as I was kind of talking about before, kind of creating that, that local spot, that community spot, that area really needs that. And we'd like to, to provide that and do it in the safest and, you know, manner possible.
With that in mind, a safety in particular, are you familiar with the liquor laws in Colorado?
Yes. We both have taken, between the two of us, three different courses. One specifically that is offered here in Montrose for Montrose, and then we've taken other ones that are for the state of Colorado. And then that will be something that we will definitely make sure all of our employees have that right out of the gate, and there will be training even before we open on that.
Yes. Anyone serving beer or wine at the establishment will have to go through this training. That's part of our policy is procedures.
One last thing that occurs to me I should probably mention mostly just so the council's aware of it, but I'll make it a question for you. The file that I have shows that your lease, I don't think will be active until first of the new year, so.
Correct.
January 2023.
Correct.
You would not be planning to utilize a liquor license until after the lease is effective?
Correct.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. And I think that's.
The build out construction won't be ready till well after that.
You answered my next question. It was because you're working on the.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, we're looking February 1st, mid-February to be up and running and.
Yeah.
So.
Does the council have any further questions? Mr. Mayor, I turn it back to you.
You have questions from the council? There are no more questions. Thank you. Seeing no more questions, I will hold a hearing, open the hearing, and we'll open that up for comment from the public. Is any member of the public wishing to address this issue? And seeing none, I will close the hearing and will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'm excited. I'll make a motion to approve a new brew pub liquor license at 830 North Townsend Avenue for Pomona Brewing Company, Inc., doing business as Pomona Brewing Company, for consumption on the licensed premise and to sell malt liquor beverages manufactured on the licensed premise and packaged in sealed containers for consumption off the licensed premise.
I'll second that.
A motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Congrats on your expansion and success.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is ordinance 2599, first reading. City council consideration to ordinance 2599 on first reading. An ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, providing and appropriating funds for defraying the expenses and liabilities of the city of Montrose, Colorado during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023. Finance director, Chaney Wittenberg.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. Yes, ordinance 2599 is on the agenda tonight for first reading, and at your pleasure, I have a presentation I could go through. I think you've seen it at least once at the public open house, or I could just give you some highlights.
I think for the public education, it might be nice to just do the presentation.
Okay. Sounds great. Let me just get it set up here.
As we fight our way through the technology.
Right. I think we're there. All right. So yes, 20, ordinance 2599 is on the agenda tonight for 2023's budget. It totals $94,806,782. Oops. Budget process, our budget process starts in about May. This year it was May 16th with a big picture strategy session with all of you to kind of get your feel for what the priorities would be for the upcoming year, talk through them with staff, and, and just establish some parameters, if you will. Then we send out worksheets to all of our department supervisors and department heads work together to put a budget, a proposed budget together. Then in July this year, we spent about 40 hours reviewing each one of those line items as a staff to make sure we knew what we were, what our goals were, and if they were meeting what city council's anticipation was. We then had a budget session with you all in September, September 21st, to review what we had come up with for 2023. That took about eight hours, and I think we got through most of it this year. It was a good session. We had a public open house in this room on October 18th. We had a couple of members of the public that did attend, and they had some great questions. And then just to revisit the charter requirements, by October 15th, we had a proposed budget out to you all. A public hearing by charter is required by November 15th, and actually, we do one on first reading, which is tonight. So we definitely meet that requirement. And then by the end of November, we need to have an approved budget ordinance, an appropriating This slide's a little bit hard to read, but it, the graph gives you a good visual. Our total request is $94,806,782, but when you take out the capital of 20.5 million, and then the 23.1 million of the transfers, that really brings it down to a pretty reasonable number as far as our past operations go. And then as far as without the transfers, it's $71.7 million. The transfers mainly are from the general fund to the public safety fund. Per ordinance 2486, 43% of our operating expenditures are to be transferred to public safety to continue to fund that function. That ordinance also established the public safety fund. That's why it's not in the general fund, continues to be in the general fund. The other transfer there is to capital. And as you all in May talked about, again, in September talked about, infrastructure is a huge priority. So you'll, you'll see that a transfer from the general fund to capital is like $6.5 So this is just a visual, trying to relate how government works. We have the city of Montrose there in the middle, and then we've got multiple funds that make up the, the whole 94 million. So it's not like we're spending 94 million on streets or spending 94 million on water. It's several funds that make up that 94 million. So in the general fund, we've got about 35 million budgeted. That's total, so that includes the transfer to capital, includes the transfer to the public safety fund. I'm going to refer to my notes a little bit here, but the general fund is the chief operating account for the city, so everything that doesn't have a specific place for it goes into the general fund. So we don't have any water in here, no sewer in here. Like I just said, the public safety fund's in its own fund, so this is the remainder of those. Capital expenditures out of the general fund include things like asphalt recycler. So our streets department has requested an asphalt recycler, which will help us to mitigate potholes, that type of thing. A lay down machine also for asphalt, a dump trailer upgrade, and then we're, we've got a bridge in town that, according to CDOT, needs a few repairs. There's a haul truck and trailer, and this is a little foreign to me, but I can kind of visualize it. We're purchasing one for the city, but we've got several funds that are going to contribute to that one. So we've split it up, water, sewer, parks, streets, and those types of things. So in the general fund, there's about 70,000 budgeted for that haul truck. The Buckley Park Playground, and then solar lights on Middle Trail. We've been doing solar lights through our park system and our trail system for a few years now, so there's five more budgeted for 2023. The developing Western Montrose Park, so that would be a park on the west side of town, which we need as far as the population growth. The Pump House at El Trusa Park, I think earlier this year, you'll remember that the Pump House there was definitely needing some attention. And then beautifying the Ogden Roundabout. So with that, this, I'd like to demonstrate on this slide that the 43% that's going to go to the public safety fund is intact. So our general fund, Public Works, that's your streets, parks, and those types of functions. The administration is city clerk, city manager, finance, city attorney, human resources, and, and those types of functions. And then public safety is what it says, and it actually includes the academy, it includes animal services, admin, patrol, and code enforcement. Taxable retail sales, the general fund is funded mainly by sales and use tax. The city does not certify a mill levy to the county, so we do not collect property taxes. So we are very conservative when it comes to projecting our sales tax, and as you can see from this chart, the 2022 projected and the 2023 budget are very, very close. Basically, $21.8 million is what we expect this year, and next year, we're projecting $21.9 million to be collected. The public safety fund, we have it budgeted at about 13.5 million. Slide just demonstrates that the main portion of their revenues is coming from the general fund transfer at 8.3 million and the public safety sales tax at 4.3 million equals 12.6 million, and there's just a slight fund balance need for the budget. I'm not sure that we're, we're going to utilize it, but the revenues are slightly above what our expenditures are. I said that wrong. Expenditures are slightly above revenues. Office of Business and Tourism, so this would be a special revenue fund, and our special revenue funds are those that by ordinance have to be, have to be separate and used for a specific purpose. A lot of times, our grants are special revenue funds. But the Office of Business and Tourism, it is made up of, it's made up of the retail sales enhancement money and the tourism excise tax. So of those monies, we have 819,000 coming in for tourism promotional monies. That's 0.8% for restaurant tax and 0.9% for hotels. And then our retail sales tax is just over $700,000 budgeted. Some of the capital includes downtown beautification, the facade program that's just in 2022 really kicked off. We've had, what, four or five applicants this year? We've actually made some dispersments of money, which is a great thing. And then the touchscreens downstairs are considered capital, and those have been in there for about 10 years, so they're ready for replacement. Other special revenue funds budgeted in 2023 are about 1.4 million, and those include a loan program for businesses in Montrose, equipment to enhance the public meeting space, the PEG is what we call it, Public Education Government Channel. So that's, it's important that we keep that, that going, and that helps us to reach the public tonight. The site improvements for two businesses that are developing, the URA is included, and then we have a special, and our special benefit fund is mainly animal care, so special surgeries, spay neuter, that type of thing are, are also budgeted. And our capital projects funds, we've got 11 and a half million dollars budgeted. As it indicates, it's for capital, large capital projects. 6700 Road Extension is there, street infrastructure for MoveMo.co. I think that's familiar to the public. That has been increased to 4.3 million. I think this year it was about 3.3 million, so we're, we're ramping that up as much as we can for the city staff to be able to manage. West Main Revitalization, that's a grant from CDOT, and we have a small amount we're going to spend in 2023, probably towards the end of 2023. I'm prepping for that project. Anderson Road Paving, South Third Plaza, that's a community effort with CMU. Then sidewalks and ADA improvements, we generally have a placeholder there at $100,000. That's a program, the sidewalk replacement program is a community partnership, and if we don't get participation, we use those funds to make improvements that we really feel need to happen. Flashing crosswalks, there's several places in town. There are a lot on the west side where we've got a lot of traffic, a lot of schoolchildren, that type of thing, that flashing crosswalks we feel would be important. Several sidewalks, the North Six Sidewalk, and then a missing link sidewalk on Townsend. There's several design projects in the budget. And then we've got the new city hall construction at 1.8 million. Public Works Designs, so if we can find a place to relocate Public Works, they're really growing fast out of their current location. We've got design money budgeted. The security improvements in this room were budgeted in 2022, but because of contractor shortage, we can't do it until 2023, so that's kind of a carryover project. And then the Centennial Plaza Design, that's actually in conjunction with some college students to design Centennial Plaza. Enterprise Funds, enterprise funds are budgeted at 17.1 million dollars. Those funds include four different funds, water, sewer, trash, and recycling, and then the Black Canyon Golf Course is a quasi-enterprise fund. It doesn't meet the definition of a Tabor enterprise fund, but it does meet a definition of that most of their revenues or half of their revenues is coming from user charges. And that's a really good distinction on enterprise funds is they operate like a business. So our water fund services our water customers, everything needed to make sure that they have good potable water. Our sewer fund serves our sewer customers, makes sure that the collection of sewage is flowing correctly. Trash and recycling, that all of that is going to the landfill or being recycled appropriately. And then, of course, the Black Canyon Golf Course, we're serving our golfers in the community. So with that, we have the water fund. Proposed expenditures there are 7.8 million, and some of the capital projects include the North Townsend Water Line, West Main Water Line, on Main Street. I think you probably all know the, the need for Main Street seems to be one that has a lot of breakages lately, and they're pretty catastrophic. So trying to get some of those fixed and designed. 6700 Road Water Line, then MoveMo projects. If we're going to tear up a street, we want to make sure the infrastructure under that street is, been taken care of, so we're not digging it up again in the near future as much as we can avoid. Emergency Water Line Replacements, that's just a placeholder. South Third Plaza, so the CMU partnership also includes a water line, and then the year two on the Southeast Transmission Main. That should finish up that project. In the water fund, this is just a graph to show you the revenues, expenditures, the reserves, and then what our policy of 90-day reserves looks like. Reserves, you can see that blue line has steadily gone down, and that's due to a lot of capital projects that we've completed throughout the years. You can see there in the bottom right, the reserves, we're anticipating that to be about 3.8 million at the end of 2023, and reserve policy would be 1.4 million. So we just really have done a lot of capital. That is what this graph shows. We are proposing a water rate increase for 2023. Connection fees would increase 5%, and that's mainly due to inflation. Doesn't even really address some of our reduction in fund balance or reserves. Our water usage would be an inflationary increase of 5% plus 15 cents per 1,000 gallons, which is a pass through from Project 7. Project 7 serves several communities right here in the Montrose area, Montrose Delta area, for potable water, and they're looking at building a facility south of town. Residential customers increase would be about 40 cents per 1,000 gallons and then 95 cents to the monthly base rate, and that makes the monthly base rate $19.94. Our sewer fund, we're proposing expenditures of $5.4 million. Some of the capital projects are San Juan Construction of 75,000, the Mountain View. So this is a continuation project, 500,000, that's to help out. It's over, in a neighborhood, it's to facilitate, facilitate some failing sewers over there. MoveMo.co, the 6700 Road Extension's going to need, we want to make sure that those, that infrastructure is sound. Block 93 Sewer Improvements, that's just between Main Street and North First. Manhole Rehabilitation, that's a placeholder. We do that every year, just do a portion of town. And then five new manholes. David Breeze has got some, several identified that need to be repaired or just need absolutely rebuilt. And then, of course, some emergency sewer repairs, things that we're not anticipating. Sewer fund graph is basically the same as the water fund graph. It's a little different as far as the, where the lines end up, but our reserves anticipated at the end of 2023 are just over 2 million, and our 90-day reserve is 782,000. We're also proposing a rate increase for sewer in 2023. It's mainly due to state and federal unfunded mandates, but it's also inflationary increases. So we're proposing a 5% increase to both the monthly fee and the connection fee. That would be a residential increase per month of $1.17, and that makes the monthly fee $24.63 for those customers who we service with sewer. Trash and Recycling, in 2023, we've got 2.5 million dollars budgeted. Capital Needs is a refuse truck, and we had one actually in the 2022 budget because of supply chain issues, we could not get it, so it's been rebudgeted, and it has gone up by about $75,000, and that's due mainly to inflation and supply. There's that haul truck and trailer I talked about in the general fund, that would be Trash and Recycling's portion of that truck. Trash and Recycling Fund, we've been watching it closely for several years, and you see there in 2023 where our reserves basically dip below our 90-day reserve requirement. So we're proposing a 10% increase for rates in 2023, making the new rate $18.30 or $1.66 more than it is in 2022. After a budget session with you all a few years ago, Jim presented some information, and we, as a group, decided it would be a good idea to continue to do some increases in trash and recycling to get that line, that blue line, to come up a little bit. And that does not really, it's, it doesn't include, it goes to 2026, but we don't really know how we're going to grow. We don't know. really know how we're going to grow, we don't know, you know, some of the things like if we hit a slowdown, what will that do? So this is just a projection, it's nothing in stone. But by 2026, we'll have about twice what we, what our target reserve is if things go as we think they might. Black Canyon Golf Course, in 2023, it's just about one point four million dollars in expenditures. Turf maintenance at about six hundred thousand, business operations with the clubhouse at five hundred thousand, and then the Rusty Putter Restaurant that we opened in 2021 at three hundred thousand. So I know that there's been some marketing ideas going, you know, through and, and how we can promote that restaurant a little bit better. So as we go around the circle here, we're up to internal service funds. Internal service funds are basically enterprise funds, but they're for internal operations. So we have the, I keep doing that, sorry. We have the fleet management fund, so we have all of our vehicles. They collect a lease payment from all of the different departments. And then, once we get to that, you know, five, seven, whatever that determination is, when the vehicle is no longer useful, we replace it and we don't have to rebudget it for the full replacement in the general fund or OBT or public safety. So that's just a way to, over the years, build up a reserve and replace vehicles rather than a huge capital request every five years for, out of the general fund. The information services fund, that's our computers, that's our technology, and it serves all of our departments, phone system. And in 2022, we implemented a new network for the public safety side, so it's, keeping those separate is a good idea between public safety and the general fund. Our third one is our facility management fund, and this is a newer one, I think we implemented it four or five years ago, and it really, it generates facility management. So we've got a dedicated crew to analyze our buildings, our roofs, our foundations, you know, and, and get those things managed and repaired, daily maintenance, those types of things happening, so that we don't end up with a huge bill, unexpected issue, so. In 2023, a large capital project that's going to come out of the facility management fund is replacing the roof at the golf course. And then we just have a few little funds, the debt service agency fund and permanent funds at just about four million dollars. The majority of that is the transfer to Montrose Recreation District for the point three percent sales, sales and use tax that we're collecting for them every month. The rest of that is, we have a loan for infrastructure back in 2017, when our general fund debt was paid off, we took out a loan to jumpstart some of our maintenance issues around town. And then the 2020 sort of certificate of participation notes for the public safety building. So that debt service is about one point five million of the four million dollars. So with that, on the agenda tonight is the ordinance for ninety-four point eight million dollars to appropriate our 2023 budget.
Excellent, thank you, Shani, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And again, we have been looking at this for a long time, so it's one of those where we've all seen this information a number of times. So now we will open a public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address Council on Ordinance 2599? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2599 on first reading as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry?
Reluctantly, yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, moving on to item number nine, Resolution 2022-14. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, adopting the 2023 Fee Schedule and repealing four dash one dash four G subsections one and two of the Montrose Regulation Manual. And this is City Clerk Lisa Del Piccolo.
Thank you, Mayor Frank. We discussed the fee schedule at the work session on October seventeenth. There is a, excuse me, a redline version in the meeting packet along with the summary of the changes. The bulk of the changes were in the utility fee increases, which Shani covered in her budget presentation. There's also a final version of the fee schedule attached to the resolution as Exhibit A. There have been no changes to the fees since the discussion at the work session. I'm happy to review the summary if you'd like. The only other thing I should mention is that, that second component of the resolution removes the COPs fee from the Regulations Manual.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll accept public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address Resolution 2022-14? And seeing none, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2022-14 as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 10, Resolution 2022-15. City Council consideration of Resolution 2022-15, a resolution of the City of Montrose, Colorado, opting out of the Colorado Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program pursuant to Colorado Revised Statutes eight dash thirteen point three dash five twenty-two. This will be handled by a tag team, Assistant City Attorney Chris Dowsley and Human Resource Director Terry Wilcox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I'll be handling the majority of this, but Terry will certainly be helping me if there are any questions. This was brought before you at work session on October seventeenth, so I won't go too in depth, as I did go fairly in depth at that point. But I will state that in November of 2020, Colorado voters did approve Prop 118, which established the Colorado Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance Act. Essentially what this is, is a program where Colorado employees would be paid out during their FMLA leave, so Family Medical Leave Act. It, it's an insurance program to where the employees pay into it, and they get paid out by the state during these leaves. As set up, the employer and the employee both pay into the program at a combined rate of point nine percent. Half of that is going to be paid by each the employer and the employee. With regards to this, local governments are able to opt out, which is why we were bringing this before you today. Any benefits that the employees do get from this, if the local government does opt out, they are still able to get on their own. They can opt into this if the local government does opt out. So the local government doesn't have to pay in, and the, the employees still get all the benefits if they do choose to opt in. The city's current FMLA leave policy is a bit better than the Family Leave Act. If the, with the Family Leave Act, while they are out on the FMLA leave, they only get between ninety percent and fifty percent of their salary. The city's current policy is so long as you are, if you've been an employee where you're covered by FMLA, you will get paid out to your full salary. So again, this is to opt out of the Family Leave Program, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So just for clarification, that our employees, should they choose to opt into this, can do so independently of the city?
Yes.
We're not, it doesn't, our opting out doesn't preclude them from joining this program if they wish?
Correct. So they actually have the option to pay into this program or to not pay into this program and still get the benefits from the city.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? In that case, we'll accept public comment. Is there any member of the public would like to address this? And seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-15 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 11, and before we start on item number 11, we have a couple of council comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself because of a potential conflict of interest.
As am I.
Thank you. We'll give you time to exit. So item number 11 is a request for support from Montrose Regional Health Ambulatory Care Center. City Council consideration of the request to abate the actual cost of water and sewer connection fees for the Montrose Regional Health Ambulatory Care Center, estimated to total forty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. This will be handled by Deputy City Manager Anne Morgan Thaler.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am presenting this request from the Montrose Regional Health Ambulatory Care Center to, for the city to abate the water and sewer connection fees for this project. Any request for abatement of water and sewer connection fees comes to City Council because it's an actual allocation of city funding to cover those fees. So it feels like a waiver to the applicant because they don't pay the water and sewer connection fees. But it's actually the city paying into our water and sewer fund to cover those fees so that our community members are not paying for those fees. And City Manager Bill Bell and I would be happy to answer any additional questions about that. We talked about it during the work session on October seventeenth, but I wanted to make sure for the public that we shared that information. So the proposal is to cover the actual cost of the water and sewer connection fees for this project. It's something that the City Council has done previously for development projects within the city limits, as well as for projects that are deemed to be a public service or a public good. This will be a community healthcare facility and is consistent with some of the other projects that have received some waivers for water and sewer fees. The city is also supporting this project in other ways, although tonight you are just considering the abatement of the water and sewer fees, but I wanted to share with you and the public that because this is an important project serving our community, the city will offer support, including waiving building permit fees, which does not need to be reviewed by City Council. Also, we're budgeting for improvements along the Uncompagre Riverway Trail that would benefit the public, the public may use those. We're also planning to contribute about eleven thousand dollars to an extension of a public water main to the site and sponsor the project's bike racks. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, seeing none, we would accept public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address this issue? And seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to debate the actual cost of water sewer connection fees for the Montrose Regional Health Ambulatory Care Center as presented.
Would you second? Is it appropriate for me to second that motion?
Second the motion.
I will second that motion. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry?
No.
We have two yes votes and one no vote.
Thank you. And if we would, someone bring back our... Hopefully they didn't go for coffee. Or if they did, they'd bring back some for everyone.
Mr. Mayor, you may wish to note for the record, the motion did pass.
Yes, the motion did pass with one no vote, two votes yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 12, The Falls at Valley Ranch Preliminary Plan Development. City Council consideration of the Falls at Valley Ranch Preliminary Plan Development. This is P. Staff Planner, William Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of city council and members of the public. I have a brief presentation to share. There we go. I'm going to present items 12 and 13 together tonight because they are associated with the same project, but please note that these are still two separate action items requiring two separate votes. The Falls at Valley Ranch is a proposed subdivision located in southern Montrose off of Otter Road. Some may remember the subdivision previously coming before City Council. The property in total is approximately one hundred thirty acres in size, though this amended preliminary plat covers a smaller area consisting of seven single-family residential lots, and also includes an outlot A to be later subdivided and developed. These seven lots are located within the R1 very low-density district, and the outlot is zoned partially R1, R2, and R3A. For any members of the public watching online who might not be familiar with the subdivision process, there are multiple stages that have to take place. As a first step, subdivision does need to go through a sketch plan application during which the planning commission has the opportunity to provide feedback and suggestions for the applicant, but no approval or denial is made at that time. As a next step, the applicant submits a preliminary plat, which must be reviewed and approved by planning commission and city council. Preliminary plats can be amended, though if that is the case, it needs to come back to planning commission and city council. We do have a set of subdivision review standards that we follow. The proposal should be consistent with the city's master plan and subdivision regulations. We also look at the relationship to topography, soils, drainage, flooding, and other physical characteristics, availability of water, sewage collection, stormwater, drainage, access, and utilities, compatibility with the natural environment, wildlife, vegetation, and unique natural features, adjacent streets and traffic flow, including pedestrian access, availability of fire police and emergency services, and impacts on area schools. The, the reason that this subdivision is coming back to you is because the applicant has decided to additionally move forward with a plan development application. These applications allow for flexibility in the scope and design of required improvements and design standards, which, they may be allowed to provide for innovative urban design, which promotes the public health, safety, and welfare. With a PD plan, we do require twenty percent open space, and the plan must reasonably preserve and protect rural character, scenic view, drainage areas, and other valued resources. The overall density within a PD plan must adhere to the zoning requirement. The applicant is requesting a deviation from the standard road template, including irrigation, utility, and drainage easements. This requires a plan development document as well as an amended preliminary plat. According to our future land use map within our comprehensive plan, this area is listed as residential mixed density medium, which allows for a variety of residential types mixed within a neighborhood, including single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, and triplexes. Part of the outlot is also designated as secondary center. The R1 very low-density district requires lots to be at least one acre in size, is pretty self-explanatory. I did include the other zoning districts here on this slide, but note that the subdivision and PD plan falls entirely within the R1 zoning district. The proposed use as a single-family subdivision is a use by right. The zoning is compatible with general conditions, and the property is adjacent to areas zoned R1A large estate district, R3 medium-density district, R3A medium-high-density district, as well as land outside of city limits. And finally, here is the plat itself. This first page consists of signatures and plat notes. For any members of the public watching, I know that these are small. For any members of the public watching, I know that these are small on the screens here, but this document is available in our public meetings portal online and easier to view there. The second page here shows more plat notes as well as the subdivision overall, including the Outlet reserved for future development. And on this page, we'll zoom into the actual seven-lot subdivision being proposed with this plat. This is similar to the subdivision that came before Planning Commission and City Council previously, but as mentioned, has an alternate road template and does include the 20 percent open space as required. And then this page is the Plan Development Plan, which shows the deviations from city standards as required, as well as the areas designated as open space required by the PD. And finally, this page shows more detail about the alternate road template that would be approved with this PD plan. And so, in conclusion, staff finds that the amended preliminary plat is in compliance with the subdivision regulations in the comprehensive plan and meets the intent of the zoning district. Staff recommends approval of the amended preliminary plat and the preliminary plan development. As mentioned before, though these two items are linked, these are still two separate action items, the plan development application should be considered first. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I take it that no written public comments were received on this?
We did not receive any written public comments, no.
Thank you.
William, are you, as the Planning Department, pretty comfortable with the deviations from our standard for the drainage and so on that are kind of necessitating this plan development?
Yes, and we work with the other departments as well on that, especially Scott with engineering.
Seeing a thumbs up from Mr. Murphy, that's always a great sign. Are there any other questions for Mr. Reese? Seeing none, we would accept public comment. Any member of the public wish to address this issue? And seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the Falls at Valley Ranch Preliminary Plan Development.
We have a first and a second, and a roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuleberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 13, the Falls at Valley Ranch amended preliminary plat. City Council consideration of the Falls at Valley Ranch amended preliminary plat. Again, any other questions for Mr. Reese? I think you fairly well elaborated on it. Do you feel you need anything else to fill in the blanks?
I don't feel I need to add anything. Thank you.
Very good. In that case, we would accept public comment. And seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the Falls at Valley Ranch amended preliminary plat expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met and that the applicant adequately addressed all of staff's concerns prior to the execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuleberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 14, Ordinance 2600, first reading. City Council consideration of Ordinance 2600 on first reading. Ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, amending the zoning designation of the Eagle Ranch PD Filing 1, Amendment 3, Outlet 1, from R2 Low Density District to R3A Medium-High Density District against Planner 2, William Reese.
Thank you again. We have received a rezone application from a property owner for a piece of land located on the northeast corner of 6700 Road and Oak Grove Road. The property is actually a bit unique. Currently, there are two separate zoning districts on the one property. Part of the property is currently zoned R2 Low Density District, as well as the adjacent rights-of-way, and part of the property is currently zoned R3A Medium-High Density District. This, in the planning world, is known as split zoning. As a general practice, we don't recommend having two zoning districts on one property as this creates complications for future development and/or subdivision. This application, which would rezone the portion of the property that is currently R2, as well as the adjacent rights-of-way, would fix the split zoning issue and rezone approximately 8.42 acres to R3A Medium-High Density District. The property is adjacent to R3A, R2, as well as some R4 High Density District. Here is a map showing a more detailed survey of the proposal. The area, which is in pink here, is where the application is applicable, and the green area to the south is already zoned R3A. According to Section 4429A of the Municipal Code, amendments to the zoning map shall be allowed upon findings as follows. The amendment is not adverse to the public health, safety, and welfare, and the amendment is in substantial conformity with the master plan, or the zoning is erroneous, or conditions in the area or adjacent areas have changed materially since the area was last zoned. The proposed zoning of R3A Medium-High Density District is intended to provide an area that is suitable for single-family homes, duplexes, and multifamily residences with intermediate density. As mentioned, the rezone would be in conformity with the, should be in conformity with the comprehensive plan. The plan is a guiding document that provides guidance for zoning and land use decisions, but is not legally binding. It illustrates general and somewhat flexible locations for various land uses and densities. The munit, excuse me, the municipal code defines allowable density, setbacks, and other development standards. According to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, the area is listed as residential mixed density low, which provides primarily for single-family homes, duplexes, and small groups of townhomes. We also look at a few of the goals and objectives outlined in our comprehensive plan. One goal is for promoting higher-density infill and redevelopment of underutilized sites and support development in areas accessible by foot, bike, and public transit. We also look to our housing goals, including encouraging a variety of housing types, tenure, and density, as well as a variety of price ranges, including increasing access to affordable housing. This application was presented to the Planning Commission, where they made a recommendation of approval for the rezone application. That recommendation was passed with a four-to-one vote. Staff finds that the proposal meets the rezone criteria of Section 4429A. It's in compliance with the comprehensive plan, including infill and housing objectives. It's compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area. The rezone application would fix the split zoning on the lot, and staff recommends approval of the rezone. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here.
Again, no written public comments were received?
No written public comments.
Any other questions? In that case, I will open a hearing. Does any member of the public wish to address this? And seeing none, we'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2598 on second reading as presented.
Second.
That's the wrong ordinance.
Okay. Let me go back to following you.
See, we're jumping a little bit faster than we need to here.
Okay. Making a motion to pass Ordinance 2600 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that again.
Thank you.
We will entertain that one. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuleberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And now, we move on to Ordinance 2598 on second reading. City Council consideration of Ordinance 2598 on second reading. An ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, designated the Knights of Pithias Building, 33 South Cascade Avenue, Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose historical property pursuant to 4-15 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. Planner 2, William Reese.
Thank you again. As you said, this is the second reading of the designation ordinance for the Knights of Pithias Building located at 33 South Cascade Avenue. Nothing has changed since the first reading. The building is eligible due to being over 50 years old. It is also significant for its association with the history of fraternal lodges in Montrose, having been erected as the second lodge hall in the city erected by the Knights of Pithias. The building, although altered, represents the classical revival style popular during the early 20th century through its cornice with brackets, concrete courses, two-story pilasters with stone trim, and windows with arched lintels. Staff recommends approval of the designation ordinance on second reading. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? And seeing none, we'll accept public comment. Any public comment on this one? And seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2598. That sounds familiar. On second reading as presented.
Déjà vu.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuleberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. That passes. Moving on to staff reports. We have any staff reports tonight?
May I give a report, please?
Of course you may.
Thank you. I would like to share with the public and with council that Bill Bell, Barbara Bynum, and I were fortunate enough to go to the Colorado Municipal Clerks Association meeting a couple of weeks ago, where our colleague and friend Lisa Del Piccolo was awarded with the outstanding contribution to the Colorado Municipal Clerks Association Award. And this is a very well-deserved award. Lisa has been the president of the Colorado Municipal Clerks Association, and even though I knew that she was highly regarded by all of her peers, it was such a wonderful thing to see everyone talking so highly about Lisa and excited to meet us and excited to share information about the CMCA organization, about everything that Lisa has done for them professionally and personally. Lisa was also a nominee for the Clerk of the Year Award with some other outstanding clerks, and she was recognized for her participation in a program that's called Athenian Dialogues, where clerks across the state, and really, I think it's a nationwide program, but clerks in the state get together, they read a book that may be applicable to their work, though it's not necessarily about clerking, it's about leadership and helping clerks remember and recognize the true leaders that they are in our communities. They do so much for us. So, Lisa completed 10 of those Athenian Dialogues and was awarded as a fellow for that, and she's hosted at least one here in Montrose so that regional clerks could get together and come to Montrose and participate in that program. So, congratulations, Lisa. Thank you for all you do for our community and our organization and our staff here. We are really thankful for you.
Thank you very much. I just have to thank the city for giving me the opportunity to participate in CMCA and in the Athenian Dialogues, and I'm always encouraged to host, and I really appreciate that Barbara and Bill and Ann traveled all the way to Canyon City through the road closure, and they even took a school bus to the award ceremony. So, thank you so much for the support.
Excellent. I think it's fantastic that we recognize how wonderful you are, and it's wonderful that other people see that as well.
Thank you.
Any other staff?
I'd have to agree with that. She keeps us out of trouble most all the time.
And that's a big job.
Thank you, Lisa.
Any other staff reports? Chief Hall?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, good evening. I just wanted to give everyone an update. This last weekend, Halloween weekend, if you will, it was an extremely busy weekend for our patrol staff. Chris Velazquez and his patrol team did an excellent job. We had an armed robbery at House of Spirits, and when I was notified of the situation via text, within minutes, I was notified that we had the suspect in custody, and I'd just like to commend Sergeant Chris Velazquez, Officer Jamie Kent, and Sergeant Matt Brashears of the Montrose County Sheriff's Office. They found the suspect almost immediately. Unfortunately, the suspect did come out with a firearm, but the officers held an incredible amount of restraint and were able to, or the subject disarmed himself, and we got that individual in custody. Then Chris Velazquez, his shift also on Sunday, responded to a situation where there was a reported explosion at one of our trailer parks, and when they arrived, they confronted an individual who was having a mental health episode and threatened to assault and kill our officers, and at one point, menaced one of the sheriff's deputies with a knife. And our officers were able to use a lot of different less-than-lethal options to get that person into custody. And so, I just wanted to commend our patrol staff for just a great job that they did this weekend. It felt a little bit odd because this isn't normally what happens in our city, but they just did a great job. So, thank you.
Congratulations and thank you to Sergeant Velazquez for his hard work.
Now, they really did an excellent job, especially on the armed robbery. That normally doesn't work out that way so quickly, and so, they were really Johnny-on-the-spot. And it was also due to the clerk and a couple of citizens that kind of pointed us in the right direction, so.
One more comment?
You bet.
One of my constituents in my district informed me that she made contact with the police department. She has bells, pulses, it's really hard to speak, and it was a family altercation, but the officers, even though they couldn't do anything, they handled the whole situation real well and explained to her in layman's terms what her possibilities for remediation of the problem.
Good.
She wanted me to just let the police department know things.
I'd have to say our officers, everything that they do, they have a lot of patience, and they do a really, really good job, so, but I appreciate you letting me know about that. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Chief Hall. Any other staff reports or updates? Seeing none, any City Council comments?
Recently, I had a meeting with the city engineer, and I just wanted to thank him personally for a job well done, providing me with the information that I needed, and thank you again. Did a great job, very knowledgeable, our city engineer.
Incredible.
Very knowledgeable.
We all think so. Any other council comments?
I would, I think we should also commend our public works folks. After they washed the street downtown, they got it fixed right away, so I think they did a great job of getting everybody back into business. Thank you.
No other comments? Entertain a motion or adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. We are adjourned.